Okay, good evening. I'd like to call the school committee meeting to order on Thursday, May 20th, 2021. All members are present. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This meeting will be conducted by telephone or video conference call on Thursday, May 20th, 2021 at 5:30 PM in accordance with executive order issued by Governor Ramondo, which modifies certain provisions of the Open Meetings Act and the Access to Public Records Act as part of the state's emergency response to COVID-19. So first on our agenda, we have the public forum. Individuals may address the school committee on only one relevant education-related topic, not included on the agenda nor related to personnel or job performance, nor revealing personally identifiable information regarding students. Individuals may speak for no longer than five minutes and must submit a public participation form to the superintendent prior to the start of the meeting. Items discussed during this session shall not be voted upon. Are there any attendees in the audience that would like to speak? Sean, anybody out there? You're muted.
I don't see any hand raised.
Okay. So we have no proclamations and awards for this evening. We'll move right on to student activities.
Our student activity, my mute, our student activities tonight is Islanders Committed, but I don't see anyone from Islanders Committed online either. So...
Want to come back to that in case they're having difficulty getting on?
Yep. Yes, I have an idea.
Can I have a motion to move the student activities until we have somebody on?
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a comment on student activities.
Okay.
I highly recommend that everybody get a copy of Newport This Week. It's about the Middletown softball girls upsetting Tiverton in extra innings.
That's right. Congratulations.
Big spread on the back, a super nice article, very well-written.
Yes, it was.
Excellent. Thank you.
We'll send that out in social media, too.
Great. That's a great idea. Okay, I have a motion in a second to move the student activities for now. All in favor?
Aye.
Before we go on to Spotlight on Teaching and Learning, I'd like to welcome Chris Logan, one of our town council members, who is our liaison and will participate in our meeting. So welcome, Chris. We're happy to have you with us. We see you there.
Thanks for having me.
Oh, Chris.
Thanks for being here. We appreciate that, and we look forward to working closely with you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we'll move on to Spotlight on Teaching and Learning.
Okay, our spotlight tonight, we talked a little bit about this with our town council during public hearing about the accelerated learning and the dollars that we will be receiving from ESER 2 and ESER 3, and we wanted to recap this discussion. So our Assistant Superintendent, Michelle Fonseca, has prepared a PowerPoint for us, and I just want to let everybody know, this continues to be a work in progress. We are communicating daily with our building principals to make sure that our work is aligned with what the Department of Education wants us to align with, and so we can submit the applications. So I will turn it over to Michelle. Thank you, Michelle.
No problem. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay and see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we talked a little bit about this last night with the town council, but really, this is the big conversation around not just our ESER funds, but our budgets, our grant funding, really tapping into all of our resources to think about accelerate learning, how to accelerate learning in the Middletown public schools. So this is part of every conversation we have because we know that the last year has been a big change for us, and there's a lot of learning loss. There's also kids who, before COVID, struggled in many ways, and we were a district very committed to working on our scores, and we still are, but we also have to think about those kids that have fallen a little farther behind and make sure that we all accelerate learning. So this is sort of the thoughts behind it, and this is a work in progress and something that we're developing as we go along, but there has been a lot of thought and effort into this. The first thing I just want to talk about is that whole idea of going back or pushing forward, and really why we're calling it acceleration, and really, you know, the guidance out there is talking about how we can best accelerate to fill our pandemic learning gaps. This is an article that I linked for you, so you could take a look about how schools, how they suggest schools accelerate learning loss, and also I'm going to show you some guidance from RIDE as well that you've probably seen before, but this is from the LEAP Committee, and this is the Learning Equity and Accelerated Pathways Committee, who, this LEAP Task Force really got together and said, "What can we do to move our pre-K through 12 system forward and accelerate learning for this group?" And they really gave us five key areas to look at. First was energizing our school communities, students and educators by launching a back-to-school campaign, and they were going to have a statewide toolkit with attention to students who are chronically absent. And I will tell you, we do need to reengage some of our students who have had problems with truancy, who have maybe been present on screen or been present in class but are not fully present. So we know engagement for students and energizing our opening school year is going to be part of our work here. Also, to ensure that students have access to high-quality support from adults during the school day, but also extended in partnerships before and after school and summer learning. I mean, we talk about this, we've talked about this before COVID. This is something Middletown was doing for and has been doing for years. We need to ramp it up and build it a little bit bigger, and these funds will give us an opportunity to do that, but really figuring out any extra opportunity we have for instruction for our students. We have to make sure we universally screen all of our students so that we can align our resources. This is something also that Middletown has been dedicated to. We screen three times a year. We look at our data. We make sure our students are meeting their growth targets. So some of this is validating for us and knowing how to move forward. Number four was improving and supporting student transitions. It's really thinking about those grades, pre-K to K, seven to eight, that means eight to nine. It's thinking about that three to four, when we change buildings, when we start different groupings, even from five to six, heading into the middle school years. So it's thinking about those transition grades and really working across the grades and across the schools and really closing the digital divide. So these are all pieces that RIDE has sort of guided us with the LEAP Task Force. And the ESER dollars come with codes, priority numbers, and descriptions for Excel grants, and as we're writing our ESER dollar, filling in our ESER dollar applications, every budget piece has to link back to one of the priorities I just showed you. So whether it's Priority 1 for back-to-school, 2 for extended learning, 3 for universal screen, 4 for student transition, or 5 for the digital divide, and then there's other priority areas that are important, too, health and safety and administrative costs. So they have to link into one of these, and most of ours really are linking into, I'll show you, they hit upon a number of the priorities, but we are certainly looking for as much instructional time and student support that we can give along with the high-quality curriculum. So these are the essential questions that we're trying to answer as we look at accelerating reading and writing and math for our students. How do we accelerate learning for all and address learning loss, and how do we do so with a focus on equity and opportunity? I want us to just take a moment to understand that whole idea of equity and opportunity and making sure that this acceleration is really for all students and doing so with a lot of measured data and focusing in and targeting at our students. This slide is one of our favorites in Middletown because it really shows the difference between equality and equity. So we're talking about the middle equity piece and making sure that students have an even ground. So you can see this first picture of equality where everyone's given the exact same box to stand on, and this guy is really struggling to see the soccer game, whereas equity, you know, the little guy gets two and the middle one gets one, and everyone's sort of brought to an even place. And then there's taking it even one step further to the idea of justice and how everyone has a clear view and a clear chance to what's going on. So really working to improve our practices in Middletown to make sure that we have that equity for all of our students. So these are some of our challenges, along with our guiding principle in Middletown, but this is just really important for us to see. These are our current challenges as we see them. We have broader disparities in skills and readiness. That's just something that pre-COVID was existing, and now it's, you know, it's even broader. And so that's something that we've identified through our universal assessments, and we just took our RIDEcast, so we will get those results in the future, and we'll be able to see how our students are doing. But we anticipate that we're going to see those broadening gaps in instructions. You know, we did lose some time with our students, and then we had transitions to digital and online learning that were difficult for some, and now we're really happy that we're all in person, but we know we have to make up for a lot of that loss. Another challenge is just the time and capacity for intervention and professional development. I mean, the school day is only so long, so we're trying to do all of the core content and then also having time to intervene with students whose skills are lacking and also make sure we're catching students up who might have fallen behind on credits at the high school, or maybe that fell behind because they were having difficulty socially, emotionally. So this is a challenge for us, finding the time and capacity to do so, and that comes into play with our after-school programming and our summer program. Also, as you know, regulation from Rhode Island Department of Education is access to high-quality curriculum materials. You've heard me talk about this many times, but we need to have high-quality curriculum materials in ELA, math, and science for K through 12, and we need to have those in the next few years. We have a plan. You've seen the plan, but know that that comes, what's the benefit of that is that we have a curriculum and we have equity and good access to the quality materials for all of our students, but that also comes with a heavy lift of sustained professional development for our teachers, and we have chosen K through 5 ELA curriculum and recommended that to you. However, we still have to select 6 through 12 in ELA, and then we still have to talk about K through 12, science and math. So these are some big challenges that lie ahead for us. We also know that teachers need tools for student support. We can't just say, you know, "We'd like you to find the time and find the tools to support students who are really behind or below grade level," or "How about those students that are on target and actually need more enriching activities?" We need to make sure that our teachers have the tools to do that, and also the tools to reach our English language learners or our differently-abled students. We need to make sure that our teachers have the tools they need for that. And the other thing is that we need to remain innovative for the fall. We don't know what's coming towards us. There's been, over the last few weeks, a real excitement in the changes that are coming with vaccinations for 12 and up, and a lot of excitement and a lot of families really jumping on board and having students vaccinated and our staff to be vaccinated, but I want to make sure that we remain very agile and we are willing to look at anything we need to, to keep the health and safety of our students and staff. And we don't know what comes in the future, so that's one of our challenges as well. Ultimately, our guiding principle is to ensure success for all students. You know this. This has been our mantra for a long time and our vision, but we want to create the conditions and provide the support to empower and build capacity among our teachers and staff. We want to maximize effectiveness with students, and we need to do that with more resources and more time. And how do you make more time in a school day other than extending the day or having some extra time? For instance, we just had an April vacation camp that was a boot camp for academics at the high school. So we're using every minute we can in the school year to really help boost our kids. These are some of the priorities. Apologies, assess is spelled wrong, but these are some of our priorities that we really want to make sure that we tackle as part of our planning for ESER. So we want to make sure that we assess and analyze data to target populations. We don't just make a plan without looking at where our students are. We need to look at those multilingual learners, our differently-abled students, our homeless students. We need to look at those transition points, pre-K to K, elementary to middle and middle to high, and even post-high, post-secondary. So those are all areas we need to look at. We need to look at our high-quality curriculum materials. We need to have our professional development opportunities be robust. They have to focus on high-quality curriculum. They have to focus on the science of reading, which I've talked about, is another requirement from RIDE. All of our teachers either need an awareness or a proficiency in the science of reading, and that will begin next year. The other thing you're going to be hearing a lot about is MTSS, and that is multi-tiered system of support for students, and those are making sure we can apply systems of support beyond the regular classroom. So not just that core instruction, but intervention beyond that for students that need it. We always know that social-emotional supports are important to put into any of our plans, and people, instructional supports. This is where our staffing comes into play, staffing at a building that can help make sure that teachers have time for intervention. So the number-one group on that list is more intervention people, more intervention for literacy. We also have an idea of having more regular substitutes in our building, so people that are there every day, that are certified, that can get to know our students, that can get to know our curriculum, that can be in classrooms and keep seamless transitions when our teachers are at professional development, or when they join a class and they can help provide interventions to small groups. So there's a lot of benefit to having instructional support staff throughout our buildings, also in the form of teacher assistants. Our teacher assistants are extremely valuable to our students and our teachers. So having more teacher assistance to support our classrooms, these are all the ways we create a little more time and actually take down that teacher ratio a little bit. So if you're in a class of 20 students, but you have an extra building-based sub that's able to join you for part of the day, your ratio becomes lower. If you have another interventionist that's able to work with a small group of students, student-teacher ratios become lower, and we know that research tells us that those are more effective ways to reach our students and close the gap on learning. The last two bullets really are extending time on learning, so being really creative and using every opportunity we have to extend instruction. We have a very robust Beyond the Bell program, and our summer program is up and open for enrollment. We are planning at the middle school, elementary, and high school levels. We have STEM camp. We have regular camps, and we also have academic intervention camps and enrichment camps. So we have a lot going on for Beyond the Bell, but what else can we do to really increase our time on learning next year, whether that's some time on a Saturday morning with teachers, or if that's during vacation? How can we be as creative as possible to really increase our time on instruction? And the last bullet is super important as well. It's increasing our family and student engagement. We haven't seen a lot of our parents, except via video, in a very long time, getting our families back involved into our buildings, making sure we make those connections with our families that might not speak English, making sure our homeless families feel supported, making sure our Title I families are supported and understanding of the literacy instruction we provide, and also getting our students back on track and engaged in the learning. We know some have done pretty well with this bumpy road that we've had for the last year, but we also know some have really struggled. So how do we get them back on track? I mean, these are heavy priorities. There's a lot of work to be done here, but when people ask, "Do we have a plan?", the answer is yes. I mean, this is what we are embedding into all of our work. So the proposed spending, and we've only gotten the first layer of ESER funds, so understanding that ESER 2 applications have just come out, we'll be applying for the ESER 2 dollars that are somewhere under $1 million right now, and then we will be applying for the ESER 3 funds in the future, and at this point, we haven't gotten any guidance on the ESER 3. But these are some of the areas that we will be talking about and making sure we work towards in the ESER funds and application. High-quality curriculum, right-to-read professional development, that transition programming, interventionists in literacy and not only literacy but in math, coaches for social-emotional learning, and multi-tiered system of student supports that we talked about, family service coordination, so outreach to families and, you know, families who have not been in contact with us, families who are struggling with truancy, families who are struggling with understanding the information we send out, but having that outreach is really important to us. Maintaining our health and safety. I will say that our nursing team has been amazing this year. They have done their full-time jobs of being their TLC wonderful selves as nurses, but they've also done tons of contact tracing, outreach, testing, constant triage for students who are ill, could have COVID. They've done vaccinations. It's just been a real hefty year, and knowing that, we would love to think about how we can best support our nurses. So that's another area that we haven't forgotten. And then that extended time on learning is super important, just the after-school time, the summer school, the Saturday time, the vacation, sort of finding every moment we can to really build instruction for students. They talk about, you know, "When does it stop?" It doesn't. It's a year-round goal for us to make sure that we do all we can for our kids. So in a nutshell, and again, this was in abbreviated form, in a nutshell, this is sort of our plan, our priorities, our ever-growing list, and also I want you to know that these are our targets, but they're also can be added to. We have constant conversations with our principals and, you know, what would help them in our buildings, and I really feel like we are going to make a difference with this programming and the ability to really get kids accelerated in learning. So we're going to stop it there and see if you have any questions.
Thank you, Michelle. That was great.
You're welcome.
Anybody have any questions?
Tammy?
Go ahead, Tammy.
I'm muted. With the high-quality learning program is over the next five years to implement it, right? Does that mean, too, that with this ESER money, that some of that stuff can get paid for over the next two years, right? And so then, when they talk about the money not being there, you're not going to necessarily need that funding?
Yeah.
Because you can lose some of it now?
Yeah, Tammy, you bring up such a good point because the other piece in thinking about this whole plan is to think about items that we could eventually lose, right? You'd lose the funding for. So yes, some of those are one-time costs. When you buy, for instance, our K-5 ELA curriculum, it's a big purchase. Luckily, right now, it's covered by our literacy grant, but our 6 through 12 is not covered, so it could go under ESER funds. It's a one-time cost. Yes, we will have yearly costs, but they will not be anywhere as high as that initial buy. So when we talk about that, it's a one-timer. We also talk about the PD for the science of reading. It's about $650 a teacher, and we need to train K to 5, all those teachers. So when you think about the costs associated, that can be supported with ESER, and it doesn't create that deficit and doesn't, it doesn't create, it's those one-time funds that you think, "Okay, good. I don't have to, I don't have to do this piece again because it certifies all of the teachers." And I think the other big piece to high-quality curriculum is there might be other grants out there, and we will go for them. I want people to know that we're not done looking and working hard on that, but these ESER funds over the next few years, especially when they talk about ESER 3, they could really help with that piece.
Nice jumpstart.
Absolutely. Nice jump for that.
Yeah, that would work out well, and I absolutely love the whole building-based subs idea.
Yeah, I think, no, it's so hard to call them, like, I feel like we should call them something else because there's so much more than that. There will be more instructional supports for students, and, you know, I think that if you ask any teacher, I remember years ago having a grant for one at my school and the impact it had to be able to have those people in your building, and they know your kids, they know your curriculum, they know your teacher, and when you have a substitute, it's seamless, or you have an extra person in the room, they know what you're doing. You involve them in your PD. You have them as part of your community, and you invest in them, and they invest in you. And so I think that's very valuable. The other increase, I think, is our teacher assistance. Our teacher assistants bring a lot of skill and a lot of care to supporting our teachers in instruction in the classroom, and I'm thrilled to say that they make a huge difference. So having that teacher assistant number increase and allowing, especially in some of our elementary classrooms, a second person really would allow our teachers to spend more time with smaller groups, and intervention, we all know, cannot be done with 20 students. It has to be done in small groups of five or six, so that allows for that to happen more throughout the day. So yeah, I'm excited about those opportunities as well.
So the other piece is some of the districts that we know, they're using their ESER dollars to help with that curriculum, the kickstart for that curriculum. But, you know, we were fortunate. Michelle wrote the grant. We secured the grant. It's a half a million dollars. So we got the jumpstart on that highly-qualified curriculum with the grant. Now, what we're doing is, you know, filling in the pieces with that ESER, with those ESER dollars. And, you know, I like the point you bring up about the building-based subs, and we need to change those names because all of a sudden, that becomes the focus of these ESER dollars, that, you know, we reduced a line here and we put it over here. These, you know, it is far more than than just, you know, a building-based sub who comes in if a teacher is absent. You know, we're building a bench here for our future teachers, but they're invested in the community and in the school community.
Thank you, Michelle. That was great information. I wanted to ask you, would it be possible if you could send that to the town council? Because after last night's discussion, I think that would be really great to share with the council. I know Chris is on board, Chris is on our meeting right now, but I think that the rest of the council would benefit in looking at that as to what we are already doing to either enhance it, support it, things like that, rather than reinvent something and put dollars into a new department when we are potentially doing the same exact thing. So if you...
That's a great idea.
If we could send that to the council.
Absolutely. It's a great idea, and I think, you know, every time that Cindy and Rosemary and I have met on this, we've talked about, like, "Okay, but we don't want, we don't want to do that. If, how are we going to sustain that?" That was, it's always our biggest question is, we can't put that in and then take that out, right? So, and one of the things we talk about is coaching. Like, if you look at a good coaching model, you have coaches who come in and support teachers, and then their job is to kind of pull away over time, right? They don't stay forever, but we also have ideas for having reading coaches, social-emotional learning, behavioral coaches, tier-two and tier-three support coaches. Those coaches, over time, if they do their job well, they pull back. So when we talk about dollars, what do you do after five years? Well, if the coaches do empower teachers and give them the tools they need, you don't need the coaches as much. So we are really being thoughtful about the spending, and, you know, we certainly don't want to build a gap by doing this, but we also want to really pump up our volume on how to accelerate our kids and what we can offer them. And a lot of times, I've learned, being out in the schools with teachers, I've learned that time is really important and being to be allowed to have smaller groups of kids is really important, just, you know, being able to focus on students in a smaller setting. So that can be allowed. You know, everyone has group conversations, but then you pull a group to the side and do a 20-minute intervention, and it's really meaningful. So I thank you for your support, and I will be happy to send that to the town council to share.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I want to just, I noticed that Lori is now on in the attendee list, and I wonder if we could go back now to the student activities and have Lori get on and be able to let us, to give us an update.
Good morning, your panelists.
Lori, you have to unmute.
We got it.
Okay, we can hear you now.
All righty. Hi, everybody. Thanks so much for having us. I am not going to say too much other than this year has been a fantastic year for Islanders Committed. They did a terrific job with our Middletown Wellness Month initiative, so I am going to turn it over to them. I'll let them introduce themselves and then talk about all of the wonderful activities that happened at the high school. all of the wonderful activities that happened at the high school.
Sean, can you uh screen share the PowerPoint?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, my name is Rachel Kerr. And I'm a part of Islanders Committed. So Islanders Committed is um a group at the school. We help make a healthy school environment, and we encourage our fellow students to make the right decisions. Next slide. So it was Project Purple. Middletown Wellness Month. So for this Wellness Month, we had three main projects that we worked on in the school, including the Wellness Tree, we had an escape room, and then we did a treasure hunt for the students, and that also had Purple Day on with it. Next slide. So, yeah, so first, we're going to go over the Wellness Tree and then the Treasure Hunt and then the Escape Room.
Um, it's some, and we, the first thing that we did for this Wellness Month was the Wellness Tree, which was painted in the cafeteria. Next slide. For this tree, we made it to represent life and growth in our school. And it was composed of trees that will fill the messages that the student wrote. And then the the tree was to help our Middletown community grow and be more connected. Also, thanks uh to Ms. Karen, our art teacher, and her students that will also help us with this tree. Yeah. But she also did her leaves, tablets. And also Dr. Heath uh allowed us to recycle a tree to for every season or every month, changing to have another purpose. Next slide.
Slide. Our next thing was the Treasure Hunt. Next. Um, the Treasure Hunt lasted for two days because we were on hybrid learning. So for the first day, we had the Treasure Hunt and Purple Day, which also went with, also the next day was also like that. So it was just treasure hunt with little medals hidden around the school during advisory. Yeah. Yeah. Next slide. And then we had the escape room. Next. Um, it was a Google form that some of our students, that some of the students did. And the idea came from Madam's, Madame Brown's French class that she did for her students, and that gave us the idea to do the same thing for the people that didn't feel comfortable enough to walk around while students are around school. Yes, next, please.
Hello, I'm Ethan Baldwin. Here we have some ideas of what we plan on doing in the near future. Uh, next slide, please. Um, before this school year ends, we plan on going to Goddard to recruit some students um as upcoming freshmen. Um, after this school year, somewhere around the end of June and the beginning of July, we are planning on going on a summer retreat um to do some team building, planning for the next year, and also expansion into Goddard, so into the eighth grade and seventh grade. Next slide, please. Um, here we have a quote from our principal, Dr. Heath. It's it's a long quote. But so he, at first, he didn't know what to expect, but then was really kind of surprised by how involved most of our peers were and how excited they got when we did this Wellness Tree project and the Wellness Month overall. I think it was really successful. I think he was um really satisfied with the result that came um that came off of it. Next slide, please. And we have a quote from our vice principal, Dennis Sores. He also agrees that this project was successful, bringing students together and understanding wellness, about positive thinking. A lot of students participated more than we thought that we're going to participate. Students would go up to the tree, look at them, actually read them. Some of them were really funny, some of them were positive and looked forward to seeing more grow as the tree kept adding on, adding on. Um, they also want to see more projects like this um in the future. Um, some of the leaves that I really liked and remembered is if you can't find the sunshine, be the sunshine. Um, some of them were also silly drawings. I had a few in mind. Um, but most of reoccurring themes were self-acceptance, self-love, respecting others and accepting others. Um, and just expression, like not getting what you're thinking out there for other people to see, um trying to brighten someone's day up. It was a really, it had a really positive effect on whole school in general. Next slide, please. Here are some pictures of Wellness Month. So we were creating the infamous purple bows that you see all over the town, setting up purple bows. We did them around the high school. Um, we did some around the town. For the Purple Day, you can see um teachers and students wearing purple. And on the bottom center photo, off to the right, you can see Ms. Dean, which I would like to introduce here. Um, she would like to share some information.
Hello, everyone. I'm Stephanie Dean. If you haven't met me, I work at the high school and at the middle school. I also work with these great youth. Um, there's also one more slide of photos. If you do want to take a look at those, if you want to go to the next slide. There we go. So you might not know what this was really looking like as we were describing it, but all of our windows in the cafeteria became enveloped with these bright, beautiful leaves with all these great, great messages. Students from every table, from every grade, from every walk of the school got an opportunity to be involved with this project. It was a really nice thing to see. It ran for the entire month during lunches. At this point, we were still hybrid, so there were kids coming back on the days that they were in the building to do another leave and do another leave and do another leave, which is a great thing to see. It was one of the first, like bigger projects where we got to have kids be a little bit more interactive at the high school since COVID has hit us. So it was really great to see them get together and and talk with their peers and and do something a little bit hands-on again. Um, and our students that you saw here, Ethan, Rachel, Eptesam, everybody, they all spent a lot of time over February break and beyond painting that tree as well as some others along the windows. If you haven't been up by the high school, take a drive. You can still see it. You can see it from the windows when you go up the drive. It's really pretty. Um, and I just want to also speak to the other, the faculty involved in it. They were also invited to create a leaf. Many of them did. Many of them came down, took pictures of the tree, shared it on their personal Facebooks or shared it on other um social media outlets. And it it got out that we were doing this project. It was a really nice thing to see our whole school come together and, you know, look at something nice. This has not been a nice year, as we know. We needed something nice to rally around, and it was I'm sorry for using the word again, nice to have this project. So we were just really happy to get everybody included. Um, we also, the three of us, an NPC, we really want to take, thank the town council as well. They always, you know, they back our projects. Um, we appreciate that. I know our students do. They helped us with, you know, the cost of all of this beautiful, bright paper, which I'm still using for other projects, which, thank you for that, too. The kids always need something bright in their day. So um if anybody has any questions or comments, I know we don't want to take up too much of your time, but we're happy to take any questions or comments, myself, Ms. Lori, or the students. Um, so we're here if you have anything. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much. I think that that's a great collaborative effort, and it it's uh looks absolutely spectacular. I'm really excited to see how cheerful the cafeteria looks and how many participants you had. It looks like the kids are really busy filling out leaves. So thank you for doing that. That's a great interactive activity. Thank you. Good job, you guys.
Thank you. Excellent job. Thank you, Lori and team.
Okay. Um, next is information.
Uh, yes, in your packet, not too much information. We do have a another uh public hearing uh with our bud- uh for our budget public hearing next Wednesday at six o'clock. In your package is our flyer uh that we put on social media about Middletown High School Career and Tech, our biomedical program, computer science and engineering. And um just the Newport County Prevention Coalition um Safe Homes uh flyer and survey that was sent out. That's all for information.
Okay, we have no correspondence. Next is the consent agenda. Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to the school committee to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
All.
Okay, old business, end-of-the-year activities and building committee.
So, um, yes, end-of-the-year activities. We put um a little, a calendar in your packet with some of the high school activities. We will get a full list for you, uh but we have secured the dates for many of the high school activities with all the changes in the uh COVID and the opening up. It has given us some more opportunities, and we're still working with our high school principal and parents and teachers and our students on those activities. But the first benchmark uh for us is our National Honor Society uh on next Wednesday at six o'clock. So that's going to conflict with our our building our our public hearing. But, you know, there was nothing we could really do about that. There's, we're just trying to fit in the days as as we can. The the days are dwindling down. So if we finish our budget early, we will be over at the high school. Um, it will be held outdoors. Uh, the next benchmark date is the uh senior prom, which is Wednesday, uh June 2nd. And that's at Ocean Cliff, Ocean Cliff. Uh, there'll be a post-prom, and time to be announced will be at the drive-in uh at what, the YMCA? We have athletic awards on a Saturday. All of these events are held outdoors uh that Saturday with a rain date on uh June 6th. We have a senior breakfast on June 7th and Corus Band Awards on June 7th. We have Senior Awards Night on June 9th. Again, these will be held outdoors. We'll put this in all-one form for you. Uh, graduation rehearsal and senior picnic on the 10th and a senior bonfire that night at Second Beach, and our graduation is on the 12th. And we're uh changing the time. The committee of teachers and parents and students are looking at an afternoon time, not the traditional noon time. And that will be the, our graduation will be held on Goddard Field. I know our high school principal and team walk the field. We're going to walk it with our police chief, too. The thinking is we would uh sit families, uh four families per uh per student in uh safe pods. Our students would be uh seated together s- uh distance. And it appears that we can really hand out diplomas this this year, and so so that, it's exciting as things open open up. So again, I just wanted to give you those dates. Everything is changing with the CDC and the Department of Health guidelines, but we're trying to stay up with everything. So we'll put put all this on one um one dot, one um sheet for you, and you should be getting invitations from the high school. Goddard, we're working with Goddard and their um their eighth-grade celebration as well. Uh, and that will be held outdoors on the uh Goddard Field. Any questions?
Rosemarie, do we have a rain date?
Yeah, we do.
Do we?
It's the day after, so I gave you the 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 hard date. And uh so for instance, graduation is on the 12th, we have a rain date on the 13th. But the sun is going to shine on all these events. Okay, our building committee, uh I don't believe we have a rep uh here tonight, but our building committee has been meeting every uh two weeks. We've completed our building tour. The town council is going to appoint a member to the building committee that uh building committee has written to the uh town council asking for uh representative because but by law, really, as a building committee, we need someone from the town council on there. So I don't know, I haven't heard of any official yet. I know Chris. I don't know if he wants to weigh in, if he knows anyone, anything.
I thought it was going to be Tom Welch, but don't quote me on that.
Okay.
Chris, do you know?
Yeah, real fast, so that'll have to come up at the next meeting for a conversation. I believe Tom is the councillor who's most interested in participating in that committee. So I'm sure he will volunteer once we bring that up, and we will approve him to be a part of that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So that completes the old business. Any questions about the building committee? Uh, Mr. Fons is here to answer anything or myself.
No, I think it's a great group, and I think that that it's going to be very productive, and we're going to get a lot accomplished this in the next few months. So that's exciting.
Right.
Okay, next is new business, ESER II and budget.
So you saw the presentation uh that Michelle gave and our desire to really use those dollars to catapult our, accelerate our student learning in so, as social-emotional support, so I'm not going to spend more time on that. Um, we did have the budget workshop with our town council and public yesterday. There was a a request from our town council. If we did not receive the 4% that we have requested, what would be cut reductions that we would consider? I made it clear in a document that uh these are all need, would needed, would need to be approved by our school committee. Uh, but to answer the request at the council, we did put out a number of um reductions that are pretty, pretty drastic, not filling a guidance council, uh reducing at the high school, reducing our fine arts program, reducing our world language program. Uh, that's would be if we got a 3%. If we had to reduce and get a 2%, it would be all those things that I talked about, a math intervention, all Goddard sports, and courses at our middle school, at our high school, electives and AP classes. If we were only given 1%, it would be all the reductions that are at 3 and at 2. Additionally, we would have to eliminate a literacy intervention, a custodian, teacher assistance, and high school sports. If we got um a zero, it would be all that we listed. If we got, um, a zero, it would be all that we listed above and possibly not replacing a principal at our grade four learning academy. Again, these are drafts. I don't want to alarm anybody. We needed to produce, um, these numbers for our town council. But they are a cross-section of where we would have to go. Again, at, at our meeting, once the budget is, is approved by our town council, you would have to make these reductions, um, at the June meeting. I, I really hope we don't have to go there because when you really look at our, our budget and who we are, we are a people organization. We are a service organization. Seventy-six point six of our, our budget request is in salary and benefits. Now, that's hu- that's huge. But that's what we do. That's our business. We are a people business. We need those teachers, our teacher assistants, our custodians, our principals, our clerical support, to do all the things that are going to help us accelerate learning. They are about, they, they are the heartbeat of our, our district and what we do. When you look at the other areas of our budget, equipment is really point three, zero point three percent. Our supplies are 2.8%. And our purchase services, things that we need to do, our transportation, food service, our tuition, is 20%. So, the, the majority of our budget, as I said, is seventy-six point six percent. Service organization, these are the people that do the work every day, day in and day out for our students and our families. So, the request for 4% is, uh, we've been saying, is not a nice to have. It is a need to continue what we're doing. And then you couple that with the S dollars, how we're being very thoughtful about the S dollars. And, uh, it, it, it puts the district in, at, at least, uh, on a pathway for success. So, I, I was surprised last night, I don't know if any of you were, when we looked at the increase in the tax rate. I, it was really, you know, it was minimal, uh, in the tax rate, especially after years and years of, uh, a zero, uh, tax increase. So, you know, again, I will not stop, we can't stop lobbying for the 4% for what we need to do our business, uh, which is educating our students. So, any questions about that?
No, I think it was a good dialogue with the council last night. So, we'll see what happens next Wednesday. And, um, we provided them the information and the, and the numbers that they requested and so we'll see where it goes from here, so.
All of our budget information is up on our website. Oh, we will put the budget, uh, information that the town asked us on the website. Hopefully in a day or two, you know, the bond request, um, that they asked, where are we with the bond? Again, we want to be as transparent as we can, so everybody understands that. You know, what we're asking for and why. And the frequently asked questions are really, uh, a good, good piece of information and I really suggest people, um, take a look at that. So, that's the end of, uh, the new business.
Okay, thank you. Next is action items. And though I printed out the document, I only got three out of the four pages, so I'm still with the same original agenda, so you'll have to help me after we get to homeschooling.
We will help you with the, uh, with the action, with the.
After the homeschooling, I'm sorry. Um, okay, first, I, I need a motion on the resignations.
I move that the school committee approve the following resignations. Shailene O'Connell, special ed teacher, Goday School, retirement effective the last day of the 2021 school year. Bonnie Seben, teacher assistant, Quinix School, effective April 6, 2021. Angela Aliva, uh, building-based substitute, Quinix School, effective May 21st, 2021. And Kristen Rockanti, data support, effective May 13th, 2021.
Okay, and I just like, would like to say, it should be May 18th, okay, not the 13th. Okay, so just for the record.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan.
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to say, um, thank you to, you know, Shailene, who, who I've known for a long, long time and, um, wishing her well and her retirement. And I wish all the other folks that are going on to their endeavors or whatever they're about to do, but I, I wish, um, you know, Shailene's been with us for a long time. I don't know exactly how many years, but she has been a very involved special ed teacher, so thank you to Shailene. Okay, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, next, I need a motion on the bid award for educational facility planner.
Make a motion to the school committee award the educational facility planner bid to Frank Locker Educational Planning.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I just will, you have in your packet, uh, Mr. Locker's, um, resume. Uh, Mr. Locker has worked in our district several years ago. He was with another company. He's on his own now. He has done a great deal of, of visioning, uh, as part of putting in a stage one and stage two, uh, program for the state with regard to schools. So, we're on a fast track. He will be doing, uh, visioning in June. Little bit in July, really engaging the community, our teachers, uh, in all, in it, all the constituents, to talk about where do we want to see our schools, um, in the next 10, 12 years? What kind of learning, uh, educational planning, um, do, do we want? Some of the work that he did with us, we have realized at Forest Avenue in the Learning Center and, and also at Goday in the Learning Center. So, he was a nice fit and that's why we are recommending him.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the contract for the owner's project.
I make a motion to the school committee approve the contract for owner's project manager be awarded to Colliers International.
We, we did add, uh, we didn't get the contract in time, so, um, we need to add, subject to attorney Scungeal and the superintendent's approval of the open items of the contract. So, let me read that motion. That the school committee approve the contract for owner's project manager be awarded to Colliers International, subject to attorney Scungeal and the superintendent's approval of the open terms in the contract.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, by, um, uh, by Rides Guidance and, and any building, um, stage one or stage two that you're, we would be submitting, we are required now to have an owner's project manager. And the job, and you have background in your packet as well, the owner's project man- manager provides a, a range of services for any, any projects that we do. So, if we're going out for a bond possibly and we're hiring an architect, they, uh, they handle everything, so that this is their specialty that they do. It is a safety, uh, for, an assurance for any school district. Colliers comes, uh, highly recommended. They have managed many program, many, uh, uh, building, building projects in the state. And, we feel, when we met with them and they, um, we feel that this was a good match for us. They work very closely with the educational office, uh, planner as well and they know Mr. Lochner, Locker and have worked, uh, with him on many projects.
I, um, I really didn't have a question. I did, but Rosemarie answered it. This, by the way, is a state requirement. I talked to Rosemarie earlier, that we have a planner like this, so we have to, it's required by the state. Right, that's it, thank you.
Okay. I have a, a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, next, can I have a motion on the job description for the district IT data support first reading?
I make a motion that the school committee approve the district IT data support job description first reading.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, in the event that we could hire a data, um, manager, we are using a part-time one now as a consultant and some staff are picking up the other piece. I wanted to be ready, uh, if we were, we did advertise for one. We might hold on that right now, uh, just to see where our, our budget, uh, is going, but I wanted to be ready with a job description.
Great. All right, thank you. Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor? Next, can I have a motion on the job description revisions for the building principal?
I make a motion that the school committee approve the revisions to the building principal job description.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, uh, we have, uh, three, uh, positions open in our district and this was the time for us to take a look at the job descriptions. You know, again, we do this wherever we have an opportunity and we tweak this. We brought it more up to date. It does not require two, two readings. It was, uh, really a tweak to bring it more into where we are now.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Next, can I have a motion on the reduction in force?
Make a motion that the superintendent's, whoa. I think I might have the wrong copy. I got superintendent's report.
Okay. Does anybody have the printed copy? I have it right here. I need a motion that the superintendent's report be accepted and adopted and the necessary letter sent out.
Second.
Any discussion?
So, yes, I, I will describe what, what, uh, this is. By law, as you know, Rhode Island requires that our school districts notify teachers of non-renewal or any layoffs for their contract for the ensuing year by June 1st. As a result, I have sent letters to teachers listed in your packet. You have a packet of the number of, uh, layoffs that we are, um, issuing. I do keep the, um, these confidential, so I will just read them into the record by number and category. I also want, uh, you to know that I've worked with our union leadership about these letters to ensure that we've, looked at all seniority issues and, and so forth. But we do need to comply with, uh, Rhode Island law and take this action tonight. This is a very difficult, the, this, always when I come to this is a very difficult time when I have to recommend these, these, uh, layoffs. When you take a look at what our teachers have done this year and a half, it is, every one of them should be teacher of the year. They have done an unbelievable job keeping our, our students, our families and each other together during these COVID times. They were teaching distance learning. They were teaching hybrid. They were teaching hybrid and distance learning. They made home visits. They dropped packets off to our families, uh, who were having difficulty getting online. Uh, it, it's just incredible. The list could go on and on. So, you know, the, this particular year, this is heavy, heavy for me to, to, to read this list, but I do have to abide by law. That's my job. We also don't know where we are with the budget, so this is protection, um, if we should get zero in our budget. We need to prepare for this, so, um, you know, it is with a heavy heart that I will read these off. I want you to know that as soon as we know where we are in the budget, I will recall as many of these individuals as we possibly can. We do not want the morale to be down. We do not want people to wonder if they're coming back. They have livelihoods too. And again, they're all teachers of the year, in my view, um, for the work that they have done. You know, we are a service organization. We are a people organization. Seventy-six or something percent that I told you earlier goes to these individuals who keep, who keep the lives of our children together. So, having said that, I am recommending to the school committee the termination effective the end of the 2021 school year, the following list of personnel due to financial constraints and to our program reorganization. Positions one and two will be reduced to halftime. Positions three to 11 are layoffs. Positions 12 to 18 are on long-term subs. Positions 19 to 26 are our building-based subs. Positions 27 to 29 are our one-year-only positions. So, having read these to the record, I, I ask that you, um, approve my recommendation.
Okay. It is with a heavy heart because I, I know as a educator myself, how hard this year has been, but I also know as a parent of a child in the system, how hard the teachers in our district have worked. And not just the teachers, but every single person, the, the teacher assistants, the clerical staff, the custodians and obviously all of you admin team. It's been an incredibly difficult, challenging year. But I have to say, Middletown has really done amazing things for our students and I commend all of you, but teachers, you did a lot. You did it all and, and thank you for all your hard work and dedication to keep our students up and running and keep our schools up and running, so thank you. And it is with a heavy heart to do this, but as Rosemarie stated, it is by law and we're in hopes that, based on our budget approval, we will be able to do the appropriate recalls back. So, thank you. So, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, um, the next motion is on homeschooling.
Make a motion to the school committee approve homeschooling, 2021-61, 2021-62 and 2021-63.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Mrs. Spengler, um, we did have someone who wanted to speak to this item.
I'm sorry.
Guys, I, I missed that, uh, as well. I did have it written down here, but I think I get so, um, emotional about, you know, doing this. Uh, Desiree Brown would like to speak. She is our world language teacher, French teacher at our high school. And, um, she, well, she would like to talk.
Okay. Sean, can you get, uh, Desiree, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you see me?
I cannot see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, all right, well, bonsoir, tout à fait juste. Um, I, yes, I was hoping to be able to speak before it was voted on, but I would like to just remind everyone, I'm the French teacher at Middletown High School. I've been the middle, uh, the Middletown High School French teacher since 2015. And this year I also became certified to be an English language.
We lost you, Desiree.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we just heard you'd be, you got certified to be an English language, what?
Learner, teacher.
Okay.
Um, and also, I was the class advisor with Rebecca Kilby until, uh, for the class of 2020. Okay, let's see. There we go. Okay, now you should be able to see me and hear me.
Yes.
All right, so I just wanted to speak about the French program because if I am, you know, laid off this year, then that means that there is no French program at the high school. because if I am laid off this year, then that means that there is no French program at the high school as, since I'm the only French teacher. And I want to let you know that since I've been at Middletown High School, I've been doing a lot with the program. We've been able to connect with the French confection. We have worked in the library with Des Fontaine to introduce the entire school to a French celebration called La Toussaint, which honors people who've passed away. And the French fours always decorate the library to honor people who've passed away, especially French, or people who are in the cemetery in France, in Parlocha Cemetery. And that's always something that gets talked about. We've been able to go to the Museum of Work and Culture in Windsocket, which is the largest French Canadian population. Our students are able to actually meet French speakers. They have the entire tour done in French. And when I was able to teach AP French, my students taught French at Forest Ave. To the third graders. And we were also able to work with the life skills students to teach them some cooking vocabulary. And then we were able to learn how to cook some, we learned how to do patoshé with them. And that was a really great experience for, for everyone. As far as what Middletown would be losing by losing our French program at the high school, I'm not sure if you know, but 29% of the English words come from French. And that includes eight suffixes. And this actually came up in class the other day. My French fours didn't know the word in English comportement, which in French is le comportement. So our French students are learning English while they're learning French. And this is something that helps when they go to take their PSATs and SATs, which we know now are incredibly important for our students who are looking to go into university. And it's also reflective of our school when that data comes back. So I want to share with you some research that I found about SAT scores for students who take a world language. So first, we'll start with students who take no foreign language or no world language when they're in school. And that's including middle school and high school. So their verbal scores average out to be 366 with math at 409. A student who takes one year has an average of 378 for verbal score and a math score of 416. Students take two years, their verbal score goes up on average to 417 with math being 463. And that number increases the more years that students take a language. So students who take five or more years, meaning that they start at the middle school and continue all the way through high school, their average verbal score is 504 and their math score averages to be 535, which we know those are incredible scores. And we would love to see that coming out of our students. These scores also increase when students take the level three by their junior year. That means that they've completed French one or Spanish one. By the time that they're in middle school, when they come to the high school, they enter into level two. They take level three as a sophomore, which means that they're able to also take French AP as a senior. I also did some research on what happens when we become a one-language school. So without French, we become a one-language school. Even though we offer English language learner services, you have to qualify for those. Students can't just sign up for ELL classes. So it was actually almost impossible to find data. But the data that I did find means that if we lose our French program and we only offer Spanish, then we are on the same page as Central Falls High School and Mount Pleasant High School, which shows me that we are aligning ourselves with the schools that are consistently the lowest rated in Rhode Island. Every school that's rated above us has at least two languages. And French and Spanish are both those languages. Also, by losing the French program at Middletown High School, we are not giving an option to our bilingual Spanish speakers. So those are students who don't test into ELL and they speak Spanish at home. Most of the time, those students come into my classroom because we don't offer a Spanish class for native speakers. They can take the AP Spanish class, but that generally gives them one or two years of a language. So they come to French. And the last thing I wanted to let you know is that I have this year, next year, I have 77 French students signed up and that's from levels one to AP. So we're really not giving any place for those students to go, right? Some of those students may go to Spanish, but based on our numbers right now, we don't have a place for them in Spanish classes. So we would either be telling them to not take a language, which we know is detrimental to anyone who wants to get into a competitive university or who wants to learn a language. And that means that we still need to increase staff somewhere. So it wouldn't save us money to, to cut my program. All right. So thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I hope that I've given you something to think about. All right, merci.
Mrs. Gregor, is, where is? Are we cutting French at the high school or is it at the middle school?
Of that, thank you. That's a good question. In the reductions that we have provided, again, and all of you would have to vote on it, if, if, where we, however, the budget, the reduction would actually be at the middle school. We would not offer French in grades four and five. And when you do, when you do reductions like this, you look at who's certified, the certification that an individual has and who is more senior. So our French program at the high school would be intact. It would be our middle school program where that would be reduced. We would not offer French in grades four and five. We would offer French in grades six through eight.
And then still at the high school?
And still at the high school.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you for asking that question. And, you know, hopefully that clarifies where, where we are with this.
Okay.
And, and again, I hope this does not happen.
Yeah, me too. I, I agree that the foreign languages are important, but we also need to have the dollars to, to support it. So, thank you. Thank you, Desiree, for, for you, for your time to, to speak with us and provide us that data and that information. We truly appreciate it. And we do, I think I can speak for the rest of the school committee and even the district. We agree with you how important a second foreign language is in our district. So that is something we really want to work hard to, to provide that support for, for our language, our foreign language, our world languages, as well as our ELL students. ESL students, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. ESL students. So, well, thank you very much. Okay. Next, and this is where my agenda got caught off. I believe it's the ELA curriculum.
So Doug, do you have the motion or do you want me?
Yes, no, I have it.
Okay.
I make a motion that the school committee approve the adoption of into reading K-5 digital teacher and student access classroom resources and student my book for ELA curriculum.
Second.
Any discussion?
So we had the presentation last month. Michelle and the teachers who were on the ELA curriculum, they did a fabulous, fabulous job presenting that curriculum. We wanted to give you a chance to take a look at that. And that's why we're asking you now to adopt.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. I'm comfortable with what we learned about it last month. I don't know if anybody has any questions?
No.
Okay, a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Great job, Michelle. We look forward to that curriculum being implemented.
Very excited. Can't wait. We already had some initial, initial conversations with them. And our teachers have been using on digital, they've been gaining digital access through their website. So they're able to, it's real exciting.
Excellent, that's great. Okay, I apologize, but was there any more action items that I missed?
No, that was it.
Okay, then the rest of my agenda is correct. Thank you. Just didn't want to skip over something. Okay, next is the superintendent's reports.
In terms of my report, I'll read for the record of individuals that we have hired. John Colley, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade baseball coach, effective April 26, 2021. Effective May 3rd, 2021, Samantha Juffson, a long-term teacher, substitute teacher in kindergarten aquinix school. Higher effective May 10th, Catherine Sotenberg, a building-based substitute teacher at Aquinix School. Higher effective May 13th, 2020, Abigail Williamson, a long-term sub grade three at Aquinix School. Higher effective May 17th, Eden Zelinski, a long-term substitute grade four, Goday School. Higher effective May 24th, Lauren Nielsen, building-based substitute Aquinix School. STEM Camp higher effective August 9th, 2021, Joshua Beegan, STEM Camp teacher. Coaching effective April 30th, 2021, Evan Carbate, our boys' assistant lacrosse coach. Coaching effective May 5th, 2021, Eric Wicks, boys' assistant track coach. And coaching effective May 18th, George Dubey, girls' assistant track coach. The others are resignations that you accepted in your action items. And for the purposes of retirement, you accepted that in your action items. So that's it.
I have a question. Did you say Lauren Noble? I don't have a check next to her.
No, thank you. I, we're just holding on that one, right?
Okay, so you're holding.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. Next is curriculum.
Michelle?
I have no other updates on curriculum, actually, on the summer learning plan. And last, last week you saw our high-quality curriculum presentation. The next step is to have a group working on the selection and implementation for six to 12 ELA. So I will have updates soon, but as for now, everything, you have everything that I, that we, we've been working on over the last month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy?
Yes.
Cindy?
So I'll cover a couple of areas here briefly for you. Current budget year. As I stated at the last meeting, we are currently projecting a red number for the end of the year. Not unusual for this time of year. But we'll shortly be going through all of our encumbrances again for year end and all of our line items to bring that into compliance for the end of the year. We are in, we have a payroll this week. And then we have two payrolls of the year to go with one of those two being the large balloon payment that goes through. So we've got some, some heavy lifting through the next couple of weeks. And then it will settle down again and we'll be able to really close this out and bring the number down. So we'll continue to monitor that and, and keep you apprised. On the 21-22 budget, I think you're up to date on that one. We're in final stages of budget hearings now to see where that ends up, hopefully with the number that was proposed. So we'll see after the public hearings are completed. On food service, we submitted today as an East Bay group, our draft contract to extend the, or to go enter a new Chartwell's contract for the upcoming school year. That's subject to your approval, but we sent it up to the state because it does take them some time to get through all of it. And there were some new forms and the like that they wanted this year. We are still working with Chartwell's, Chartwell's on our end to finalize a budget for next year, given all of the new information that keeps coming out continuously from RIDE and USDA. So we will have that for you at your next meeting for approval. And that'll be for the upcoming school year. In terms of the food service account, again, with all meals essentially being at no cost this year, our early startup costs for paper goods and containers and, and more refrigeration and the like for meals that we incurred at the start of the year is starting to level off now that the program is back in a profitable position or, or on a monthly basis. So in the month of April, there was a profit for that month of 6,931, bringing our year-to-date loss down to 25,674. So we still have May and obviously June is generally, you know, pretty light. But May still has some good food service time in it. Our account is sufficiently funded through prior year revenues to be able to sustain that loss that's projected for year end. Obviously want it to be as small as we can, but we are in a good position. Some of the other communities aren't as fortunate, but we've been doing well in that regard. So I don't anticipate anything further on that other than coming to you, hopefully at your next meeting with the food service contract recommendation for award. Human resources, again, essentially work continues in all of the areas that you've seen before. It continues to be a very busy area. And as we approach the latter part of the school year here, there's a lot of work to be done to tie it up. And then we'll begin that process of the exiting for retirees and the wrapping up of all of their payments and paperwork for benefits and the like. And then we go right into the cycle of onboarding anyone who's coming on for the first time. So again, a busy time. And then I just wanted to follow up with you under the category of funding that RIDE has now released the application for SR2. It's in the same format as an accelerance CRP application. So as you've heard from both Michelle, myself, and Rosemarie, has a lot of strings attached to it, a lot of detail that they want, lots of categorization. And then it goes through various, various stages of approval at the Department of Ed before all is said and done. So as we reported last time, we had a preliminary draft number. How's that for a number cast in stone, right? So a preliminary draft number of 953,000. We knew that they were already talking before that was even out to us in application form, that there was a holdback that they had to do on the dollars because they need to be able to do some set aside monies for new charter school enrollments, new schools and the like. So they were working on that at the time. When the application was released, there's now a new preliminary draft number that is what we're going to use for the submission of the application. That's 944,005. So again, it went down already. Now they're saying that we're going to apply under that. And then in April, not April, sorry, January, there will be an open amendment period. And by then, hopefully, they will have dealt with the set aside and will maybe get a few more dollars and hopefully get back up to where we were supposed to be. But that is an ongoing process. As you've heard before, the funds, the application has to be submitted by July 1. The sooner we get that in, the sooner they can get to reviewing it and we can get an approval. Because obviously if things are going to be used, you know, for summer and the start of school, the sooner we get our approvals, the better shape we're going to be in. So we're all working on that as a team now. And hopefully we'll get that in pretty quickly and, and have some good news to report from that. So, and as the superintendent indicated, SR3, the Department of Ed has informed us at a recent meeting that they don't even have their application for the SR3 funding approved yet. And it has to come to us through RIDE's application. So we'll be waiting on that. We don't have our draft numbers yet either. But the good news is at least we know SR2 and we can begin the work on that. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Sorry, I was on mute. Thank you, Cindy. I, I think that you've done an amazing job. You've really identified all the numbers and what's needed and what's going to be losses for us if, if we are not funded correctly. But I think where, where the SR dollars are going and all of those dollars, it's, it's really been great. So thank you for your hard work. I know that you've been working lots and lots of hours and all of the budgeting for COVID and all the different things. So thank you for, to you and your team for all the, taking care of all those dollars and cents.
You're very welcome.
For keeping it. And you've been so transparent, which has been fantastic. I think that, that's been huge to be able to put that information out there, allow the town council to see it as well as the community members. You know, it's, it's clear. It's black and white. There's, it is what it is. So, thank you. Okay. Facilities.
Good evening, everybody. Want to start off first, staff continue to mitigate IC issues for cleaning and disinfecting in all the schools. And, and again, I really want to recognize the staff. We've been And, and again, I would really want to recognize the staff. We've been down about six people for quite a while. We got two more, two coming back Monday. We're still going to be down four. We continue to have most of our maintenance staff perform the, you know, uh, infection control mitigation steps. And, uh, as the rest of the Middletown, uh, School Department staff, i- it's been a tough year for them also, especially having to wear all this extra PPE and stuff. It's not the most pleasant way to perform your task. So kudos to them. Uh, Mrs. Craig talked about the building committee, um, working with the co-chairs, developing a stage one task list. I'll be getting that to them, uh, either tomorrow or Monday. Uh, as she stated, we completed all of the school building tours, which I think was excellent information for the committee. And I'll be reaching out once the town council appoints a, uh, member to the building committee, I'll be offering him or her the opportunity to tour all of the schools. Individual tours, no extra charge. And also I know Mr. Logan's on. If he, I know he's new to the council. And if he'd like tours of any of the schools, uh, at any time, uh, you know, um, are willing and able and available to do that because there's nothing like seeing the, uh, the inside of schools and not only outside. So I, I think that's always, uh, good information uh, to see and to hear about what we've done and what still needs to be done. The, uh, Gaudet, uh, track and turf field, uh, fantastic news. Monday night was a good night. It wasn't even Monday night football either. And, uh, town council approved the track and the tennis courts and the basketball court. Uh, I had told Mrs. Craig. Soon as, uh, they voted on that Monday night, I got on the phone and I don't know if it was eight-thirty, nine o'clock or what. It was, uh, I called the contractor and told them, okay, let's go, let's get ready, let's get the wheels turning. Uh, I'm waiting on Karen Masaro, uh, to move around some, uh, track, uh, practice. Uh, she's going to be looking at a couple of other districts because to get both of these projects done uh, by the middle of August is when, you know, Salve and, uh, our district starts using the field. It's, it's very aggressive. I- it'll be done, but we have to actually get on and stop that track, take the surface off in the beginning of June. Lacrosse will still be available. Uh, you know, I already talked to Karen about that on the weekends and after four o'clock. Uh, in a nice collaboration effort, instead of having the contractor, uh, clean up the top surface after that scraped off before they get down to milling the two inches below that. Uh, be, that'll be done after graduation, but the surface will be taken up before graduation. I reached out to Mr. Handley from the DPW and they're going to come into the complex with the street sweeper and clean up the track and, uh, make sure it's, uh, presentable, uh, and not an eyesaw for, uh, graduation. Other events will be having. Uh, HVAC project wise, the HVAC project that was part of the bond.
Excuse me, Dave. Can I just interrupt for one second, please? Um, I just want to publicly thank the town council. I was on that meeting Monday night. Um, this is a great opportunity for our district as well as the, um, the community. It, it really is an important move and I, I, it's greatly appreciated that the town council supported it and were able to do that while Salve is resurfacing the football field and they're putting those, they're their dollars. So we're not spending the money on the football field, but we're making the investment into the track, the tennis court and the basketball court. So it's going to be an incredible complex. When it's done, it's going to be safe. It's going to be, um, a state of the art. So we're going to be able to support other teams and, and have a great complex for our community, along with the lacrosse fields that will be, um, ready to go pretty soon too. I don't know if they're ready yet. I think they're still using the turf for lacrosse, but, um, so I just want to publicly thank the town council again and, and we look forward to this great community effort. So thank you. Sorry, Dave.
No, no, that, that's an excellent point, Teresa. And in fact, when you look at, you know, i- it's, uh, it's, it's so exciting when you see projects done. Even the Gaudet main entrance project, which cost, you know, a boatload of money, but, you know, it came out so well. And, you know, i- if we didn't have the funds, if we didn't have the bond funds for that or other funds for all the energy projects, uh, we can never realize these things. So, you know, that, that funding is so appreciated with all of those projects. Uh, another, so the one HVAC project that Gaudet, it included in the language wing, a new rooftop air handle replacement. And also the, uh, teacher's lounge area, kitchen area on the, uh, upper floor that had no air conditioning or ventilation. Uh, and this project included, uh, cassette, uh, split system DX with heat recovery uh, to cool, uh, that area. It also, there's a guidance room, I believe, next door, a support space and also the SRO office. So it took care of all of those. That's complete. The, uh, the HVAC major project for the high school in Aquidnic, uh, that project right now is on hold. It's, uh, the bid award, uh, is being contested by one of the contractors. And right now it's in the hands of the, uh, town solicitor, I believe, still, uh, for review. A couple of energy projects, uh, the high school, I talked about this in one of the previous meetings. Uh, the present state there is in the classrooms, there's zone valves for the heating system. It's a zone thermostat. It's a regular high voltage thermostat. It's not DDC controls. That controls one side of each of the wings. Uh, the plan is to put DDC controls on that, new pump controls and expand the building management system, which is our automated software platform. It's a John's Controls platform. And that project there, we were going to utilize, uh, our tower funds, uh, that we've utilized over the years. Our tower funds this year are being targeted, uh, to support the track. Uh, it, I, I believe it's, uh, you usually have around sixty-six, seventy thousand for that. So we're looking at another project. I'm waiting for national grid approval, which would be on bill financing. So as part of all of our bills, whether it's on the commercial side or residential side, there's a demand spot, the end res- demand response program where money comes out of our bills and it funds energy initiatives that national grid. So then money national grid gives all of us, whether it's a household project or a school project, i- it's not like it's coming out of the shareholders. It's coming out of the money that everybody puts into the system. So the great thing is though, it's at no, no financing cost. So we've done, uh, I think I mentioned this last time, w- we've done about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of energy projects over the last four years, two hundred and fifty thousand in national grid incentives. And most of those projects were done with on bill financing. This is no cost. That's the good thing, though. The unfortunate thing is when we can't upfront money, then we don't realize those savings until we pay back the, the, uh, like usually a five or six-year payback through on bill finance. But at least we're getting new ma- new material, new fixtures. Uh, so that project, I'm awaiting national grid approval. And then depending on where our five-year plan goes and to what extent we'll be going into, uh, we'll be going into, uh, we'll be going into the, uh, I just lost my train of thought. Senior moment.
Yes.
So, yeah, so, uh, the, the, the five-year plan, depending on where that goes, if it doesn't expand off to, uh, if it doesn't expand off to the high school in all areas, we've done LEDs in with the areas where there's drop ceilings, we'll put LEDs where the surface mount fixtures. We haven't yet on that. Uh, ju- just getting back to, uh, you know, the track and we, we do appreciate, like, uh, you know, Mrs. Spengler said, with the funding, we have put many of these things in our fi- in our CIP budget, but unfortunately we haven't had the funding, uh, you know, and th- there's actually a bucket of like twenty-five million, uh, that's potentially, and hopefully is going to make the next five-year plan. So, uh, a, a lot of these get identified and unfortunately they have to be deferred a lot of times, but, you know, and that's where we perform our risk assessment, safety-wise. And we, uh, basically prioritize like it, like in any organization, those there. Uh, Mrs. Craig had mentioned about Colias, wh- which is going to be, uh, you know, after tonight's approval, uh, contingent on that review, our OPM. We did work with Colia. They're also an organization that provides commissioning services. And they were our commissioning agent on the Gaudet new entrance. And for those of you, uh, that haven't heard the term commissioning before, that's another RIDE requirement. We've done a lot of in-house, they call it retro commissioning, where systems that have been in place for twenty years, are they still operating per design? And that's where we take airflow measurements, electrical measurements and so forth. But, uh, the commissioning is a ru- ride requirement to have on any project where they get involved from the beginning of how is a system supposed to work? What's the measurements are supposed to be? And they do basically do that evaluation and make sure the design comes through fruition to what's, uh, the actual, uh, put in place. And, uh,
Uh, Dave, thank you. Thanks for making that point too about the track being in the, uh, CIP because, you know, there was perception even last night from, um, you know, a constituent that called in saying, you know, we sprung this on the town council. Um, you know, in fact, it has been in our CIP, uh, but with no funding source. So, you know, there has been a plan on the school. We knew the sunset, uh, for the track would coincide with the sunset of the, uh, turf field when that needed to be, um, uh, renovated. And actually it was last year, but because of COVID, Salve, you know, could not, uh, do the, um, the track financially last year and deferred it to this year. So. But thanks for bringing that up because I think that's important to know, you know, that the perception that is out there is, oh, all of a sudden we said the track was, um, not in good condition. So I appreciate you mentioning that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, that, that's an excellent point, Mrs. Craig, and it's, y- you know, i- it's like, we don't, like, the way I look at it, like anything else, you know, you, you'd like the Cadillac and anything. You'd like the schools to be Cadillacs, you know, from the facilities. And that's not, that's not realistic, but, you know, you want to make sure the environment's safe, both the physical environment, the indoor air quality and so forth. So i- it is important and even like, and I, I think it was, it was mentioned during, uh, I believe, the town council meeting of, you know, planning for, because this track's going to be done now in two thousand twenty-one and we've had roofs done, uh, over the last three years and those roofs in thirty years are going to need to be done. And, you know, you know, I mean, most of my life was thirty-five years was in the private sector and, you know, they do it a little different because they're able to. They basically fund depreciation. And when you fund depreciation, the bucket of money is there when you need it. But, you know, municipalities and state government, they're, they're not set up like that because they're, they're not private organizations to be able to have those kind of funds. So.
No, but I did mention last night at, at the meeting that, um, we, when, when Salve did the initial surface of the, of the field, when they did the initial turf field, it was talked about that they were going to replace it this one time. And we did the track at the same time. So that did come up that the two were hand in hand. And we actually got an extra life, uh, an extra year of life out of it, I believe, if I'm correct on that. So now I think that we are going to be responsible for the next turf field and we need to start planning for that now after this track is done because it's going to be the field and the track. And that's going to have to be done in another ten or eleven years from now. So those dollars do need to be set aside. Like you said, Dave, that we need to have that and we need to plan ahead of time. We need to plan for depreciation. So, thank you.
That's all I have.
Yes, Lee, go ahead.
Um, yes, um, Dave, do, how many schools have air conditioning in them? I'm looking long-term to, you know, a hundred and eighty days is going to be a, you know, pass, per se, within the next five or ten years of, of education. So what about the air conditioning?
Well, Gaudet has unit ventilators, which, uh, you know, and, and again, I, I hate to start, you know, saying certain things because I don't want to scare people, but, you know, the, the Gaudet unit ventilators will need to be replaced, you know, with it, with, i- in the next five-year plan, you know, not year one. Those are, that's, that building there has a two, uh, two-pipe system. It's basically the cooling and heating. And so that is cooling. Uh, some people think air conditioning, uh, dehumidifies. It dehumidifies under certain circumstances, uh, depending on what the chilled water temperature is. Uh, so Gaudet will also, could also utilize, you know, in the next five-year plan, some dehumidifiers, you know, not portable ones down in the basement area. The, uh, kindergarten wing at Aquidnic, so that'll be a new system, uh, Mrs. Fenton, that will have, uh, air conditioning, uh, capability to it. And so will the high s- high school classrooms now. When I say air conditioning, it's going to temper the air. So, uh, i- it'll dehumidify to a certain point because that's all we're bringing in is fifteen, uh, cubic feet per minute per person to meet cold. But it will cool and dehumidify, you know, these other systems, especially because they're direct expansion system versus chill water. So it's even a colder temperature to dehumidify. There's some areas at Gaudet, uh, also the gymnasium at Gaudet is air-conditioned. So the, the newer systems that go in and RIDE is even, uh, RIDE's even, uh, requested this if funds are permissible because that's the time to do it. If you're replacing a system, it's a lot less expensive to have AC capabilities than versus to retrofit a system down the road.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, technology.
Good evening, everyone. How are you?
Good.
Hi, Sean.
Um, I'm going to start with, uh, I'm not going to say the boring stuff, but the list that you have in front of you, I'm going to start at the bottom and work up from the help desk stats because I'd like to share my screen out and just show you the, uh, the tool that I put together with Google Data Studio last.
Okay.
So our help desk stats, uh, stats from last month are, uh, almost half of what we've normally been receiving. Um, obviously, you know, we had a, uh, week vacation, so that is a big impact on it. But we went from two hundred and fifty-four, um, requests that we received and we completed three hundred and seven of those. Um, as for RIDE CAS testing, we are just about done. Um, ELA in math, with the exception of a few makeups, and some new enrollments that came in last minute. And NGSA had, I believe, uh, today was, um, uh, the middle school, uh, had their last test. And, um, the high school will be doing theirs on the twenty-fourth. And then makeup testing, as always, will, will happen usually the week after that or short to follow. Um, this is a little more interesting. Our network upgrade is, uh, the first phase of it is happening. I met with Cindy today and we're processing the requisitions. Um, big part of this is CIP. Um, but I will note while we're thankful for the CIP, uh, from the town council, it is, uh, we're at a fifty percent rate for E-rate, so we are going to utilize the majority of that. And this is our last year with E-rate. So, uh, we really want to use every dollar of that. Um, we're lucky enough to where E-rate also, usually E-rate ends, uh, the use of the June thirtieth. Because of COVID, they've extended it to, um, September thirtieth. So we've got a little more time. So, um, we had about ten or twelve thousand dollars left over from the hardware that we could use in that, that we could now, um, because of the, the, the time limit, we can now extend to June thirtieth and use. So phase two will use, uh, the remainder of that. Um, but we're really excited to do it. The network needs to be done. Our access points, um, are pretty aged. Um, I will put a little note in there to know that the are pretty aged. I will put a little note in there to know the, the issues that we went through with Chromebooks with, uh, you know, the lack of manufacturing and supply and demand on some of the chips. We're hearing that now with some of our, some of the access points. So there may be a little bit of lag. We're hoping that it's not going to take more than four weeks for us to get them. But right now, we're, we're hearing that it's about three to four weeks. So, and I'm going to share out my screen to show you the, the, the next bit that I gave you screen, excuse me, screenshots on. Okay. Let me know when you can see it. All right. Can everybody see that screen?
Yes.
Okay. So what this is, is I've hooked what's called GAC, Google, uh, Google admin console that looks at all of our devices and looks at our users. And what you're seeing here is usage, and I took, uh, March first to, um, yesterday. And this is done by year of graduation. So you'll see Chrome devices, two thousand and twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-seven. Each of those are the year of graduation of the student that has that device. Um, and this is, this is good. You'll see some of them that are a little lower, but those are the lower grades that don't really use the technology as much, but they are using it. I'm looking at it as a real positive. You can see the week of vacation there where it drops back down. I'm looking at it as a real positive because even when they're taking them home, guess what? They're using them. Not as much as they would as they would in school, but they are still using them. So this is, uh, this is a tool that I've just recently hooked up. I'm going to be giving this to our administrators so that they can, you know, if they want to say, you know, how often are my second graders using these? They'll have, um, a tool to be able to look and see usage from day one when we put them in place to just one day usage. So, you know, I think you get the point. The other, uh, the, the average utilize, excuse me, the bottom one here, the average utilization by day of the week is also interesting because you can see they are being used on weekends as well. Um, and this, again, is just the average from March first to, um, uh, yesterday. So what, what our administration will be able to do is go in here and basically pick the year of graduation they want to look at and pick the timeframe that they can look at. And I can make this a little more granular. Um, and I'm, I'm going to where it will be, as we know, you know, um, two of our elementaries have the same grade levels. So I, we're planning on breaking it out by school so we can be able to see it by school and grade level. But you can see that they can pick the dates here. So if I just picked, uh, just for instance, let's go to, let's go to for a week usage and just say from, excuse me, uh, the tenth to the fourteenth, to the nineteenth. A little more, more than a week, but you'll see that the stats, they're connected right to our Google admin console. They will adjust and it, and you'll see those graphs change. So I mean, these are just real access tools that we've built in place for our administrators to look at. There's another one within GoGuardian that gets really granular. This is just usage of the device. And GoGuardian, I'm working on setting up a very similar tool for our administration to see where the kids are going. It tells you, you know, how often they're using Google Docs, how often using Google Sheets, how often are they going to, um, you know, certain of the, the desktop apps that we have or cloud apps. But these, I just thought this was really interesting so that the community, um, the school committee members and, um, this is firstly, administrators are seeing it. And I will be showing the administrators, uh, in our meeting next week, but I was just really excited. I really wanted to get it on the agenda for today and show you a little bit about it because it does say, you know, the kids are using the devices and we're thankful to have them. Any questions?
Wow, that data, that data is spectacular.
Yeah.
That visual is, I mean, do you know, we hear numbers, that's great, but when you see that, that graph
Yeah.
and the usage, like you said, even on the weekends, you know, I, I think that's spectacular. The only thing I would recommend is, um, if you could vary the colors a little bit because you can't see, and I'm blind as a bat, so maybe I just need to get better glasses, but, um, the, the yellow stands out, but the purple and the, and some of the other colors kind of blend in. But I think when you're looking at especially the older students, I think that's really nice to see those bold colors, to be able to see those students using them. Sean, that is spectacular. Thank you for doing that. And the bar graphs are, you know, again, different people look at different graphs in a different way. So by doing it with those different bar graphs and the, um, I love the lime one. Oh, my gosh, that was spectacular.
Yeah, Teresa, what's interesting is I even looked at, uh, I just picked one day and ran it and to look at some of the Sundays, the usage on Sundays, the kids getting ready for Monday.
Yeah.
Some of the grade levels are, I mean, they're up over eighty percent.
Wow.
Yeah.
You know, I really think this is something else when you have it a little more concrete. You know, I think that the town council should see this as well because, um, to show what, what we're doing with those Chromebooks of how hard, how hard we worked to get them and the, the point of getting them and that we're actually, they're being used the way they were supposed to, if not more. So I think that data would be great to share with the town council, of course, and, and as well as the community so that people can really see that our technology program is, um, successful and doing what it's supposed to be doing.
Yeah, I was, I'm even thinking about maybe embedding, um, some of it on our website, but I, I don't have it there yet.
Well, yeah, when you have it, though, I'm just saying, I know this is a prelim, a preliminary look, but when it's ready to public, to publicize, I just think that's spectacular. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
So that concludes my, unless there's questions, that concludes my report.
Okay, can I get a motion to receive the superintendent reports?
I move that the school committee group commissioners reports.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, reports of officers and committees.
Um, at the state school board level, we had a, um, another, um, person come in to talk about equity. Her name is Judy K. And, um, you can see her video and as well as her PowerPoint, uh, if you go to the RYASK, um, website, it's, it's, it's right there. We're trying to, to add on more of our speakers nationally and statewide to, uh, to show what people are doing with diversity and equity and inclusion.
I think, I know, uh, the National Conference allowed us to continue on to keep getting more of the, of the hours after the conference was actually over that weekend.
Yes.
And they recorded those sessions and I thought that was fantastic because I actually went back and watched four or five more.
Right.
But that weekend was tough to, to do it all at one time. And, and the thing I liked about those sessions and I, and RYASK did it too, you know, they were short. They were short. They were productive. They were informative. Whereas some of the times when you go to a conference, you're sitting in the classroom for two and a half hours, which is just too much, too long, too much information to absorb. But there was a lot of diversity, um, in those sessions and, and I thought that was really great of how they did it this year. So I'm glad to hear that RYASK is doing that. You said RYASK is doing that as well, right?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
So we're putting it on with permission and so forth. The National School Board Association doesn't share right now. It shares if you attended the conference, but that's all. So we're working on that because I'm working at the national level also. And then, um, so I'm hoping that we get all of our lectures on.
That's great. Thank you.
On to our website so everyone can see it.
And I think that, you know, by, by getting a certificate or like on the National Association one, it was, um, doing a survey, which demonstrated that you completed the, the PD time, which is good.
Right. And then they want feedback because this is how they're going to improve also. And, uh, you know, so I gather the information and send it to them.
Excellent.
Yeah, so we're, we're getting there.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any else? No? Okay. Well, our next meeting is June twenty, I don't have it. I'm sorry. I'm going to the calendar.
June seventeenth.
June seventeenth.
Okay.
And by then graduation would have been over, but the school year was not over until the following week. So, um, hopefully everybody can make graduation and some of the special activities coming up for the end of the year. Thank you, everybody.
We will be setting a special meeting for after the prom. Remember how we do that if needed. So that would be, um, I'm thinking it's the, uh,
June third?
Third.
Okay.
Third or fourth, okay.
If, if needed, though.
Yeah.
If needed, okay. So let us know that as soon as possible because that's creeping up. I'm sorry?
We will, definitely.
Okay. Because that's actually two weeks from today. Or tomorrow. Okay.
We actually have a little bit more time, too, if the, the prom is the second, right, and, um, graduation is the twelfth. So it could, it could be the following week.
Okay.
Typically, the prom is two days before the, um, graduation, but we moved it up this year.
Okay.
And maybe the explanation for that special meeting is if anyone, um, breaks code of conduct or behavior at the prom that would need to be disciplined and not be able to graduate. That's why we would have that special meeting.
Right. Okay. Anything else? All right. Thank you, everybody. Doug?
Thank you. I move to adjourn from the school committee meeting.
At seven thirty-three.
Second.
Thank you, everyone.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.